Programming on WCS TV channel 180 is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
Please turn off all cell phones folks. If you need it, please put on the vibrator. Please remain standing for the word of prayer and the pledge of your flag.
We are raised tonight to have with us Brother Kathy Keyes and Minister. He stand in church of Christ, then Brother, if you would just come to the microphone, please. And please remain standing for the pledge of your flag.
Let's go to God in prayer. Our God and our heavenly Father, it is with great honor and privilege that we bow before you this evening, thanking you Father for the love that you extend upon us, and Father also for your constant guidance and presence in our lives. And Father, tonight, we come to you thanking you for the establishment of government, Father for setting the civil rule in order, and Father for establishing within them their rule upon the citizens over which they are appointed. And Father, we thank you for our commissioners here and for their service to you. And Father, also, though, tonight, we are mindful of three families who have lost loved ones who have also been servants here amongst these commissioners. Father, we pray that you will be with the Glenn family, the Yancey family, and the Jones family during this time of loss. And Father, we know that indeed their presence here is missed amongst those who have been honored with the chance to serve with them. And Father, also, though, I thank you for those who continue to serve, for their desire to serve as commissioners over the citizens of Warren County. And Father, not only for these services, but also for their families, for the sacrifices that they make, so that these men and women are able to meet and to make the decisions that are necessary to move us forward as a county and as people. Father, I pray to your guidance upon the meeting tonight, for the one who will serve over the meeting, and for each one who will speak, and for the decisions that are made. Father, that they will make decisions that will be in alignment with the wheel, and also, Father, that will be beneficial for the citizens here of Warren County. Help us all, Father, and those of us who are citizens here that we might encourage our servants, those who serve as commissioners and even in other areas, that we might stand with them and encourage them that they will serve with honor. Father, please be with us through tonight and through our lives. In these things, we humbly pray in Jesus' name.
So, Lord, I believe...
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll, please?
Terry Dale?
Here.
Lawrence Barnes?
Here.
Charles Alden?
Here.
Here.
David Boyd?
Here.
Carly Brown?
Here.
Ray Wilcher?
Maybe?
Here.
Ronald Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Ken Martin?
Here.
Michael Martin?
Here.
Carolyn Miller?
Here.
Charles Morgan?
Here.
Gary Frager?
Here.
Lady Gray?
Ken Roberts?
Here.
Scott Rudeley?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Diane Starkey?
Here.
Lane Wiltshire?
Here.
Michael Shane Wilcher?
Here.
Lissa Gansy?
Here.
Twenty-one present. Okay, we'll move on to our docket. I'm sure you've all received your docket. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the docket. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second. Second by Commissioner Kenny Roberts. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Bell.
I'd like to amend the docket for the approval of the Finance Director, Bond.
Okay, you put that in the motion?
I put that in form.
Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, there's a second. Second by Carl E. Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. With your permission, Commissioner Bell, we let that out of 5/8. Be fine. Okay. Commissioner...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the docket also to accept the resignation of Brian Jennings, EMA Director.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion.
Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
There is.
Second by Commissioner Randy England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed likewise. Motion passes. Okay, we'll go back to our original docket as amended. Oh, I'm sorry. That'd be out of 4/8. I'm sorry. So, we'll go back to our original docket as amended. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the docket as amended, say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The docket is passed as amended. I'm sure all of you have received your minutes or any additions or corrections. The chair will entertain a motion to dispensal reading of the minutes and approving the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Yancey, second by Commissioner Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Minutes are approved. We'll move into our elected officials department reports, and first on the list is Ms. Linda Hillis, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you have any questions regarding the Finance Department's report, I would be glad to try to answer them at this time.
Move it up. Motion by Commissioner Bell to approve, second. Second by Commissioner Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, Agriculture. I talked to Ms. Lidle. She was coming back from Martha'sboro. She's in a rainstorm traffic. She's not going to be here. I'm sure all of you have her report if you've read it. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to write them down and get with her and get back to you. Got a motion by Commissioner Lee to adopt. Second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Forward, Richard Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Do you have a copy of my report? I'll be happy to answer any questions you may ask at this time.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lee, second. By Commissioner England. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
I would like to ask a question or two. Herschel, pause.
Richard, thank you for being here tonight. I was just more curious. My understanding is the airport has possession of the Whitlock land now, or do we?
No.
Okay. Do we know when we will have that?
We don't.
Okay. And are the trees still invading the flight path?
They are.
Okay. That's all I need to know for now. If you can, when you find out if we get that property, would you please let us know as soon as...
Absolutely.
Thank you, Richard. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else want to speak? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard. Next is Coles Environmental, and that'd be Richard Thompson. He's our new Coles guy. First time in his, he all saved him. He's done a good job. Thank you.
Go ahead, Richard.
Good evening, Commissioners. Do you have a copy of my report? If there's any questions or comments, just clap your hands.
Motion to approve. Motion by Carl E. Bowden to approve, second by Commissioner Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Richard. EMA Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, do you have my report if you have any questions at all?
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bowden, second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Thank you. Motion passes. EMS Brian Jennings.
Leadeth, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen in court, we have to answer any questions if you have this time.
You all have his report. Motion to approve, motion by Commissioner England, second. Second by Carl E. Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me...
Yes.
...on the note for that resignation, I tendered that to Mr. Wells, what last week I guess it was. If you would allow me, I'd like to read that letter at this time.
Go right ahead.
Um, the letter was dated plus sixteen, and it says, "I was writing a letter to inform him that effective this January third, I'll be resigning my position as Director of Warren County EMS to pursue other avenues of emergency medicine. I've always been proud of the EMS service in the Avenue of Warren County. I've always been proud to serve the public from my hometown. I will continue to serve my community as a paramedic at Warren County EMS. And I want to thank you, good people of the county court, that served on this mission, and for the opportunity to lead this service that I consider one of the best around. But I'll take this opportunity personally, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen in court, for the opportunity. But I will be, like I said, I will be serving as a paramedic and ambulance like I did for many, many years."
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for your service.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much. Next is Industrial Development Board, Mr. Don Edmond, Senator.
Me, the county executive, Mr. Wells. Commissioners, I have my report. I'd be glad to answer your questions if I can.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lee, second.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Don. We'll move on into our committee reports, and first on the list is Budget Finance, Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Budget Finance has nothing to report.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds Call E. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as I know, everything on the building and grounds is running pretty good. We've not had a lot going on here lately, but everything's running pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic and Agriculture Development, Commissioner Ronald Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and Agriculture Development, Commissioner Randy George.
Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, education has nothing to report.
Thank you. Financial Management, Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial Management has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Health and Welfare, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Charlie. Health and Welfare have nothing to report at this time.
Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Frager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety, Commissioner Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to report is safety committee met prior to the meeting and accepted Brian Jennings' resignation, five to zero.
Thank you. We'll move into our special committee reports. First on the agenda is the County Corrections Partnership Committee, and that'd be Commissioner Mars Bond.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, County Corrections Partnership Committee has nothing to report.
Thank you. Redestri, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have nothing to report at this time. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go into new business. Item One is Commissioner Jerry Frager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Highway Bridge Committee met on December one and voted unanimously to recommend the Resolution Number Seven Two Fifteen be rescinded. This resolution was adopted earlier this year, and the roadway reference in Resolution Number Seven Twenty Fifteen falls under the county rather than the state jurisdictional proposals regarding naming of this or two additional roadways are included in Resolution Number Thirty-Six in Twenty Fifteen. This is the road that we... It comes across from Spring Valley Road and goes right up to the airport. We had named it Runway Road, but we decided to go with another name. And just because at that time we'd done that, the county hadn't had authority of the road yet. So, I so moved.
Everybody understand the motion? Have a motion as a second. Commissioner Ken Martin, anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item Two, Commissioner Jerry Frager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution establishes names of certain roads in the county in Warren County, Tennessee, and adding certain roads to the county to the Warren County Road List. Therefore, it be resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the twenty-first day of December two thousand and fifteen, and make remember Warren County, Tennessee, as follows. Section One, that the section of road beginning at Senator Jerry Cooper Highway and extended to the Warren and Cannon County line, including a portion of the road previously designated Nashville Highway, US Highway Seventy, while under jurisdiction of the state of Tennessee, be next designated as Old Nashville Highway and added to the Warren County Road List as such. Section Two, that the section of road beginning at the intersection of Jerry Cooper Highway and Spring Valley Road and running until it meets Old Nashville Highway be designated as Airport Road and added to the Warren County Road List. Section Three, that the section of road beginning at the intersection of Airport Road and Old Nashville Highway, beginning the portion of C Rowdy Road that is now dead-end road following completion of the Senator Jerry W. Cooper Highway, be designated as Holder Lane and added to the Warren County Road List as such. That this resolution shall become effective upon adoption of welfare of the county requiring it. I so move.
Have a motion. Everybody understand the motion? Have a motion, second. Commissioner Miller, Carolyn Miller, second. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item Three, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number Thirty-Seven Dash Two Thousand and Fifteen, a resolution adopting the Lookback Measure method under the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act for Warren County, Tennessee. The Budget Finance Committee met on December the ninth and passed a resolution required by five points the county's software provider for the Fed relief mandated Affordable Care Act. The purpose of this resolution is to determine employee status or eligibility of health coverage, and I so move.
Everybody understand the motion? Have a motion, second. I got a second by Commissioner Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. I'm... Forward, Mr. Frager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Highway Department has requested a budget amendment to allow for purchase of two new pieces of heavy equipment. Each of the following committees voted unanimously to recommend approval of the budget amendments, and the amount of the amendment is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So move.
Have a motion as a second. Have a second. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Please call the roll, please.
Terry Dale?
Yes.
Lawrence Barnes?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
David Boyd?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Ryan Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Ken Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Lissa Gansy?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion to approve, twenty-one zero. Item Number Four-Eight, Commissioner Teddy Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said earlier, we had the State Committee had met except Brian's resignation, so his resignation to support except his resignation. I have to get the full motion.
Have a motion as a second. Second by Commissioner Melissa Gansy. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner. Item Five, County Court Police Scott presents the Sheriff's bond for approval.
The first bond that was done was the wrong amount, and they put a rider in it, and we're not accepting, so we're going to redo it with a whole amount. And it's for the sheriff's bond, an amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Gary Martin, second by Commissioner Yancey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. I'm sorry. That is a wrong call.
Terry Dale?
Yes.
Lawrence Barnes?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
David Boyd?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Ryan Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Ken Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Lissa Gansy?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes, twenty-one zero. Item Five-Eight, Court Police Scott presents the Financial Directors bond for Frager.
Ms. Linda Hillis's... Her bond that we approved was wrong also, so the new one is an amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Tommy Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Call the roll, please.
Terry Dale?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
David Boyd?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Ryan Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Ken Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Lissa Gansy?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion is approved, twenty-one zero. Item Six, this will be for the appointment of District Six Commissioner Phil Jenkins of Big Earl Jones, and I think it... What we have to do is it was in the docket. You know how we're opposed. We have more than one. We have to start at the top the first time, same time we'll start at the bottom, so the floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I would like to nominate Linda Jones for that position, please.
Okay, we have Linda Jones, deserve second. Second by Commissioner Bond. Okay, we got her. Okay, the floor is open.
I'd like to make a motion. All nominations cease.
I have a motion. Let me... There's a floor open for any other person. Any other... Want to give everybody a chance? Okay, we have a motion that all nominations cease by Carl E. Bowden, second by Commissioner Teddy Bowden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. So, we'll call the roll. We have a motion for Commissioner... I mean, for Ms. Jones. Would you please call the roll, please?
Terry Dale?
Yes.
Lawrence Barnes?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
Charles Alden?
Yes.
David Boyd?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Ryan Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Ken Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Rudeley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Lissa Gansy?
Yes.
Motion passes down one. You were after the committee meeting. If you please cut forward and actively adjourn, and we will swear you in. Item Seven, County Court Police Scott presenting numbers.
This is the address for the numbers. Gina L. Melvin, Becky Foster, Brian K. Jennings, Sue Dale, Shelley J. Adams, Chrissy D. Sharpe, Josie M. Ma, Mary Lou J. Moore, Emily D. Lamier, M. F. Knowles, Wanda J. Pendle, and Amy D. E.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Scott, ready, second by Commissioner Lane Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes. Under announcements, Carol has a couple announcements she'd like to make, please.
One will be about your ethics disclosure statement. Some of them have already spoken to me about it. Those cannot be filed electronically until after the first year. We have some cases where they have the website open, and before then, go in and do that, and then it throws the system, and it's logged in for the previous year. So, don't start that at home until after the first of the year, and then you can do that with the call. Now, secondly, I hope there's been no P.T. going on up here, but I do have something for all the commissioners if you'll come see me at that desk Friday at the oars. And in the meantime, I wish all of y'all a Merry Christmas, and I would hope you all remember through my New Year's season.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, I have this card that I'd like to read to you. It's from the family of Big Earl Jones. It acknowledges with deep appreciation your kind expression of sympathy, and I'd like to read what has been written on it. It is with deep gratitude that we express our appreciation to the members of the Warren County Commission for serving as honorary pallbearers. He says, "But Big Earl had much respect for each one of you. Your expression of sympathy will remain always in our hearts." And Ms. Jones, that comes from us the same way. And thank you. Is there any other announcements? Motion to approve, Carol?
All move.
Motion by Commissioner England, second. Second by Commissioner Gary Martin. All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise.
Programming on WCS TV is made possible in part by a donation from...